Oops. I would like to call the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council Regular Meeting Order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker? Whackler?
Present.
Cassidy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Um, may I have a second? And a second for Mr. Carey. Thank you. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would, uh, move to amend the Agenda and Consent Agenda by adding Lay Down Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three dash zero three-two. This is authorizing Mayor Whitney to sign a letter providing comments to the National Marine Fisheries Service regarding the proposed amendment sixteen to the Salmon Fisheries Management Plan for Alaska, sponsored by the mayor and Vice Mayor Parker.
Are there any objections to adding Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three dash zero three-two to the agenda? Do I hear any objections? Saying none, uh, the Action Memorandum is, uh, added to the agenda. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
November eighth, twenty twenty-three, council meeting minutes. Ordinance twenty twenty-three zero four zero, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by four thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars seventy-one cents in the general fund for forfeited property sponsored by the city manager. Public hearing on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. Resolution twenty twenty-three zero six-six, adopting an out alternative allocation method for the FY twenty-four Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and certifying that this allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries business activity in FM fourteen Cookinlet area sponsored by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty-three zero six-seven, establishing the city of Soldatna legislative priorities sponsored by the city manager. Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three zero three-one, mayoral appointments to advisory boards and commissions sponsored by the mayor. And the lay down item added to consent. Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three zero three-two, authorizing Mayor Whitney to sign a letter providing comments to National Marine Fisheries Service regarding proposed amendment number sixteen to the Salmon Fisheries Management Plan for Alaska sponsored by the mayor and Vice Mayor Parker. That is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item just read by the city clerk? Seeing no one, I'll look at Zoom and... I see no hands raised. So having no one wishing to speak, the approved of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Saying none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Uh, the next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice and that will be the the Kenai Local Food Connection update. Uh, I'll introduce Susan Nabholtz. Okay. Hopefully I didn't, uh, mangle that name up too bad.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mayor Whitney and the city council members. Um, I'm gonna, my name is Jeanne Figgency and I am a volunteer along with Susan Nabholtz representing the Kenai Local Food Connection. Susan will be handing out our local food directories that we publish here as well as buttons that we made with the button maker that was part of our purchases when the city awarded us a thousand dollar mini grant back in September. And we want to really thank the city council and everyone that's involved in that selection process for awarding that thousand dollars to us. So I have a lot of slides because it's a wonderful event and we take a lot of pictures every year. Um, I'll talk to you. Okay. Yeah, we both love to talk. We have a passion about food in general and local food in particular. Well, uh, next slide, please. So, uh, thank you. And I'm gonna skip most of the slides I have work on because I think pictures speak louder than words, especially when it regards food and even so, next slide, please. Thousand dollar grant paid for the button maker. We work with buttons and the kids have a lot of fun. When we get to the point of the slides where it shows activities at the kids' tent, I'm especially glad students pop in. Uh, we also pay for stipends for the musicians and this year we have the Kenai Brass Band end the day for us with a very browsing bunch of music so we could dance and get warmed up after freezing all day. And so, and then it's also paid for advertising. And advertising works. We had as many people come this year as we've had before. Last year we had a high of three thousand. I think this year was about max twenty-five hundred, maybe twenty-two hundred. It's really hard to count people when they're coming in from all directions. But we have our methods of extrapolating numbers to count them at certain times. So we think we'll come back after it. Next slide, please. So first we can look at some of our previous years where we've had a lot of blue sky and wonderful weather. Next slide. And you'll see the scarecrow in a lot of pictures. It's been very popular this year with other tents. People could enjoy the scarecrow. Next slide. Can you check the machine?
Yeah, I don't think it is. Not that one.
Nope.
Is it on now?
Is it on now? Oh, yes, it is. Sorry. I will lean back. So this was, uh, twenty twenty-two at the end of the day when we were just getting ready to load up the trailer and, uh, takes a lot of enthusiastic people to stay there all day and then have load up things at the end. And the lady with the neon is the one who made the scarecrow. He has our, she, her name is Her Majesty Harvest Moon, H M H M. So, um, she has articulating joints, so she can do a lot of things. Next slide, please. And this is Eliza Eller a few years ago. Eliza's from Ionia and one of the core group that started the Kenai Local Food Connection, which morphed in from a resilience organization a few years before that, before my time. Next slide. I'll briefly list these or you can read them along with me. So each year we have dozens of vendors featuring locally grown produce and value-added products, health products featuring locally grown and harvested ingredients. We have the fermentation station, the kids' tent, the information tent, chef demonstrations, educational talks, the Wild Edibles Walk led by Dr. George Spady usually. And we also have, um, a Wild Berry Walk with the Cooperative Extension ladies that happens a day or two before the festival. The pie contest grows every year. This year it was, um, we had the maximum number of pies that we had judges and people ready to handle. And, uh, Kenai Peninsula Chapter Alaska Farm Bureau is very involved in that and, um...
Local chefs, local chefs were our judges.
Local chefs were our judges. And we have kind of a waiting list on people that want to be judges for that pie contest. So shoot us an email. We have a website, kenailocalfood.org. If anyone's interested in looking at that and that's a good way to contact us, we have a Gmail account linked there and where you can sign up for a newsletter that comes out sporadically. Um, then we have the live music and entertainment and new this year we had a viewing tent for Nourishing the Kenai. We got a grant from the Raspisen Foundation and, uh, K'nitese to make that twenty-five minute film featuring local farmers, some local chefs, local harvesting and our food system here on the peninsula. It's really interesting. We've shown it twice locally at the festival. It's been shown in Homer and other places.
Alaska State Historical Society, when they gathered at the college recently, that was a phenomenal showing. We had some of the people from the film in person. Uh, it was great and great feedback. And we have a lot of interest in more people wanting to show that.
Yes. Okay, next slide, please. So this is again, uh, a sunny day with, uh, one of the Cool Cash Farms, a vendor that's been there from the first festival we had in twenty eighteen. Next slide. Alaska Grown is featured by vendors and by shoppers and this person is, um, checking out pie contests. So we'll go through these sunny ones quickly. Next slide, please. Peruvian cuisine. I loved his picture because the river's in the background and he was, had his girl going behind his food truck. Next slide, please. This lady now has, uh, she was doing a chef at the market. She usually talks about, um, ferment sourdough and you can see that sourdough cookbook there on the front and she's holding one for grandchildren. Now she has her own business, Wild Current, and she sells kombucha and other fermented products year round and, but she got the incentive that she can, I can do this because she was doing talks at the festival for us. Next slide. Arnold Family Farms does the Saturday market and a lot of our vendors, um, say that they do better this one day at the Harvest Moon Festival than they do any other day at any other market. And sometimes they exceed their sales that day than they have all summer, depending on how some things have gone. Next slide. I should have pointed out in that last picture that he had his yellow sign up about, um, senior wick and the double up coupons are welcome. So double up coupons are another thing that Kenai Local Food Connection facilitates for people that, for seniors, senior citizens and for people that receive wick. This last year was, uh, kinda hard because the state didn't have their act together, but next year we're gonna try it again. Next slide. Pie contests. They sometimes sell the pies. Um, this year they had so many pies and not so many shoppers at the end of the day, so they were giving out slices of pies to volunteers. So if you ever want to volunteer, get in on that. That's a wonderful thing to do. Next slide. So Tia Holly works for the K'nitese and although she's not a native from this area, she loves to talk about her people and indigenous people and her business is called Indigenous Herbals and we really appreciate her input in our planning meetings and, um...
She's made our partnership with K'nitese Indian Tribe really powerful, like for funding as well as just a lot of community outreach for events.
Do you want to bring in, sure, up here, Susan?
I have a little giant carrot.
Oh. Next slide, please.
This is the amazing Willow King. You guys better know her if you haven't eaten her food.
She has a business called Where It's At. She also owns The Goods down there on the corner on K Beach. Next slide. So we have a demo tent every year, um, as well as a chef tent. And here Larry Opperman, who's very involved in the garden club, is talking about soils and potatoes. And you see that orange bucket there. We have, uh, buckets all over the fairgrounds to collect food waste that goes to Diamond Dem Ranch usually for chicken feed. So the composting project that's been, we help sponsor that with the burrow. It's just where wrapped up.
And Regroup helps with that as well as far as trying to minimize any of our waste from there. Um, I mean, I literally have the kids that volunteer with me at the kids' booth picking apart, you know, the little ends of the carrots from anything that might be paper or anything that might be plastic. So we keep, keep that really clean.
Next slide. So this is one of our vendors that had a local food business and now she's working at home now that she has children. And, uh, I just included that because it's such a sunny day. We have to faster, please. I forget to tell you. And, uh, Dutch Oven Society always has a wonderful demonstration and they have, they sell food there and they also have free samples. So it's a good reason to go to the festival. Next slide. Jamie Tucker does the music on the stage for us every year as a volunteer and he does a wonderful job. People come and just listen to the music when it's just on a sunny day. Next slide. So previous photos were taken in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We didn't have the festival in twenty twenty. So again, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, every year the festival is bathed in sunshine except a little drizzle. In twenty twenty-two, we had to dry out all the tents in my garage afterwards, but, and it only took a day. This year we had to dry out the tents and it took several days and pools of water. So that talks about the attendance and then next slide. So there's a lot of preparation that goes in. Next slide. Susan made our carrot, showed up one evening and, um, Susan, talk about your carrot and what?
Well, I had a giant mushroom. A really fun guy who was there the year before. And, uh, so it's just part of that, one of the things we have a photo booth over at the kids' um, tent. We actually have five or six tents that are the kids' area now. We've got so many things going, but one of them is the photo booth. And so that one, actually, if you're close enough, you can see it got a little dirty and I decided to leave the dirt on the carrot instead of trying to wash it off because that's a little more authentic. Um, so there's now a giant carrot. Um, and we also have dress up clothes, which we'll show on some of the later ones. The photo booth on the sunny event was super popular, a little bit quieter, um, this year, but...
Next slide. We had special t-shirts made for our volunteers this year. That doesn't happen every year, but we do give our volunteers some nice swag. And you can tell that Willow's there. We meet at The Goods once a month through the year and then as it gets closer to the festival, we meet every week to make sure all the, our ducks are in a row. Next slide. This year we had our logo printed on, or Susan's son has an engraving machine. So he did the engraving on the cutting boards for sale.
Little bit of our merch. We're learning the word merch from the young, young people.
Merch, yes. We're learning our merch. Next slide. So part of the preparation is going over to the Soldatna Creek Park and laying out where everybody's gonna be the next year. And so this was a challenge this year. It was windy, rainy and Heidi Che and, um, Emma.
I don't know. Emma's listening to you.
No.
Okay.
She's from out of Ionia, but Heidi is a key part of this organization and she's very helpful in helping us get things set up the night before. Next slide. Next slide. So here's our schedule. It shows things that are happening on the stage, everything happening at the chef tent, everything happening at the demo tent. We have a wonderful guy, Stephen Cronlidge, who's the registered dietitian for the K'nitese and he gets all the people set up for the chef tent and the demo tent. So it shows that blue box says kids' area. That's Susan's Bailey Wick and then the orange merchant info tent. Our tents are all color coordinated and they go in a trailer at the end of the year. Um, green is fermentation station, food trucks all over the place. And then the additional activities there, it talks about the Wild Edibles Walk that you, people can sign up for. The pie contest awards are awarded at three thirty after everyone has, the judges have sampled. And then this year we had the Harvest Moon Dance at five o'clock with the Kenai Brass Band. Next slide. Okay, next slide, please. So the wall tent came from Ionia so we could have a dark area to show the film. And that area was very popular this year because it was nice and enclosed in on all sides. So people could go in there and just get warm and get out of the rain and, and, and sit down and enjoy the film and get warm. And so, uh, next slide. So it took a bunch of people to carry it over to its spot because we tried to stay off the lawn. Next slide. So families, this mom was a volunteer and her husband and kids showed up and everybody's decked out in rain gear. Next slide. One of our wonderful gardeners, actually her name is Kay Gardner. She grows these stupendous, uh, Cole Robbie. And I, one year I had one sitting out in my volunteer tent and people would stop and talk just because they'd never seen a Cole Robbie before. And I had never once seen one that big. She brought two that size. Next slide. One was for display at the garden club table. And so they had a, they're a very informative bunch there. And then they had to shut down for a while because it was same day as their monthly meeting. So they had to go over and have their meeting and then they came back and finished up the festival. Next slide. And the farm bureau is there and I just put that in because it shows that we have to put the tents close together and figure out who wants to be next to who because sometimes the same people are handling more than one organization or helping out at more than one place. So they might have Lancashire Farms that's right next to the farm bureau every year. Next slide. Our first shoppers, they were in and out of there before ten o'clock. This was before ten AM, the actual opening time, but they came prepared for the weather and their shopping bags and they're happy. They're very happy. And most people that come to the festival, it, it's wonderful. Food brings people together. Next slide. Ladies preparing the pies for the contest. Next slide. Um, a vendor. Next slide. Grace Acres Farm always brings tons of food, literally tons. They, they were late this year because they had to do some maneuvering to avoid oncoming traffic in their lane. And so one of their trailers flipped and spilled a bunch of their produce and they had a real rough day, but...
Like a thousand pounds of produce. And so then they had to have markdown produce. Like it was very fortunate because it was a really dangerous driving.
Yeah, and it happened just after that other fatal accident.
The amount of produce that they grow is absolutely phenomenal.
Casila of Grace Acres. They are listed in the local food directory. And, um, next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Cabbage. Next slide. This shows two of our, um, volunteers that Stan Stedman always gets lined up, a group that just take over one of our five recycling stations. And so our volunteers there help people get food and plastic and aluminum and trash all sorted in the right buckets. Very essential part. These guys were set up at a part that they didn't have much to do. They were pretty close to the stage. They could just enjoy the music because there weren't too many people, um, able to sit down and enjoy the picnic tables.
We do contract with Willow to feed all the volunteers. So they're going back and forth and, um, and some of them had pretty big appetites because they're all young men who are about twenty or twenty-two, right? So, uh, and then that crew comes in the morning and in the evening and it's absolute, they're like, you point and it's moved. You point and it's moving. You blink, you're like, what? Oh, they already got it put away. Absolutely impressive how much help they give us.
Besides the young men, they, the families come in the morning and help all the vendors set up and get their stuff to the right spot and in the evening and help, help us get everything back into the trailer. Next slide.
So one of the things we have, uh, veg out for families that just need to have a little time downtime to go chill, uh, and chill for sure in the weather that we had, but just camp chairs and books and toys and things. And we have a couple of tents like that in the kids' area.
Next slide.
And then we have some pretty awesome face painters coming in. Um, I teach at Kenai Middle School and so I always recruit a bunch of my eighth graders and then some of my former students that are high schoolers. And I usually get in touch with Tamra Ware, somebody over at Sohigh, and we get a couple more volunteers who come over from like Sohigh or Skyview. Um, and we just have this crew of, uh, older teens and young adults doing the face painting and it's all free.
Next slide.
And this is one of my eighth graders who is extremely happy to be dressed as a carrot and drag that carrot all over the park. Sawyer.
And that also showed one of the games you have there. So...
Uh, I think there's a, keep on one of the slides too. Go ahead to the next one. And, uh, we have a science, yeah, that one's fine. The science tent. So with microscopes and uh, information about grains that grow in Alaska and the kids can use the compound microscopes just to look at the plant structures and learn about the plants. And then on the next slide, um, we had checkers. It's extremely soggy checkers, um, but they were carrots and tomatoes this year because the potato crop wasn't so good. Uh, and then beanbag toss like Manigard. So there's just a bunch of little fun stuff that families can do with their kids.
And did you do the edible necklaces this year?
Yeah, you don't have any pictures here, but the best thing is salad on a string edible necklace. So we go around and I use about two hundred dollars, um, from our funds and I buy stuff directly from all the farmers. And then the kids, um, who are, they're helping chop it all up. And so you have these little kids who have like kale and, you know, pieces of Cole Robbie and carrots and they're walking around eating their necklace. And we get grandparents and parents that make them as well. So, yes, that's the, that's probably the most popular part of the kids' area.
Next slide. Some of my helpers. And they were choosing their volunteer t-shirts at the end of the day. Next slide. So this is Wild Current. Um, Brandy is down behind her. She was in a earlier sunny slide doing one of the chef at the market and now she has her Wild Current business. Next slide. This is one of the musicians' families, um, Ben Jammon. And the next day he was moving to Texas and I've known him since he was a little kid. So, and now his daughter's singing with him on the stage. Next slide. This is Susan's son's Jake.
I can talk about that. So he has a local business called Nabholtz Fabrication, um, locally educated in our schools here in Kenai. And he does, he just donates the engraving for this and, um, does whatever I tell him to do and point. And he's still young enough and still lives at home in the cabin on our property. So it's like, help with this, help with this. He's definitely an awesome volunteer. Um, and then, uh, the awards, one went, um, to Willow King who had this like super uber tie dye booth with everything. So that was the most festive booth. Um, and then the most local food truck was Fireweed Bakery who also had like identified everything local, like which local businesses.
Next slide, please. You have a couple of those. So here's the lady from Fireweed Bakery and you can see her award right behind there. Next slide. And there's Willow with some of her, um, tie dye. Next slide. And she, you can see there she's dressed for the weather and other times she's also dressed for the weather. So it, this was, it was a real challenge this year. So the Fireweed Bake Shop had their food listed, the, um, the farm that it came from and which product it was in, I think. I can't see it.
The biggest thing that when we came up with the name Kenai Local Food Connection is how are we connecting everything? And this was a great example of how many local businesses that are supported, um, by people who are spending their money locally are now connected and exist because of Harvest Moon, because of Local Food Directory, because of this organization and because of everybody spending their money and supporting each other. It's, it's amazing.
And because of women like us that talk a lot. And I know we're getting close to our ten minute. So next slide. And so, uh, Steve Albers raises chickens and he was selling one of his frozen chickens there. Next slide. And then our families are very important and usually it's just a lot of us ladies. There's men involved too, but this year at the festival, a lot of husbands showed up to support their, their wives, which was wonderful. So here we have Heidi Che and her husband Dan, Eliza Eller and Ted from Ionia and they're, um, Ted's usually there too. Next slide. And then we had Brad and Susan and my husband Joe and me. Next slide. And of course we have Merrill Sikorsky who is great at documenting everything and I just love taking, he hasn't seen these pictures, but I love taking pictures, Merrill taking pictures. Next slide. So, uh, Jack and Sue musicians, they're there every year and not for the money. They just love to sing for us. And, um, this year we learned from our musicians that we have to have heaters on the stage next year.
We have to budget for heaters.
We, we had, yeah. And next slide. So our Alaskan kids eating ice cream in the rain. I forget what the local ingredients were in the ice cream. I didn't get to time to go to that shop. And then our, another, she had a great sign until it got rained on. Next slide. And good times had by all. We, that kid was just singing. I have a video of them too. I didn't include that. Next slide. This is the last slide and social media at the end of the festival. The one, um, Blood Sweat and Food Farms from Homer came up with, that's the picture on the left there. And then the reindeer hut was the one who won the most local food award last year. And our faithful vendors, they love coming. And, yeah, and we love doing the, doing the Harvest Moon Festival and we really appreciate having that monetary support from the, from Soldatna City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
We have some swag for you.
We want you each to have one of the buttons that came...
And if you want to pose later with a carrot, you could...
I, I don't have...
Thank you.
I just don't...
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is, uh, public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda. Three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes added. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, uh, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Will you step forward here and, uh, state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes?
I always, uh, talk too fast because of the timeline. My name is, uh, Nick Connor. A lot of people know me from Nick's Lotte Glass. I've lived here my whole life. I'm actually on, uh, on Cahill, which will be a topic for another discussion because it's in Soldatna, but it's not in Soldatna. It's on Mackey Lake. It's one of the few dirt roads we still have. And, um, I'm here to talk about, uh, the chief of police in Soldatna. Um, I came with a bunch of stuff to talk about and, um, my experience with, um, Chief Meeks is he's, um, always given me new opportunity to talk about new things. So I'd like to change that a little bit and discuss the, uh, blue line flag that he is wearing tonight. Um, the blue line flag, um, has been banned in some police departments. It is in the U.S. for its association with ideology described as undemocratic, racist and bigoted. Um, what's funny is, is that, uh, the chief has a seventeen seventy-six front license plate on his car, which is, you know, the founding fathers, you know, against, you know, tyranny and having representation, but yet then he's wearing a blue lines flag, um, on his uniform. And I was just talking to Jeanette Bauer about today. Um, I did not know they had those. Um, I hope to see that that's, um, gonna be remedied. Um, my biggest thing here is there's probably a lot of talk going on about me behind closed doors. Um, I'm not a threat to the community. Um, I went to the police department with a complaint. Um, it involved some of the officers there. And because of that complaint, I am now being investigated by the police department, um, through, uh, some FOIA requests that I have here where he sent... um, through, uh, some FOIA requests that I have here where he sent my name to, um, the H I D T A, which is an organization that deals with people who are like in gangs and drugs. Um, I went there to address the first amendment. Um, they had, uh, bibles on the front counter at the police department. Um, I thought that that was a place where we could have free speech. So what I did was is I left him with a stop police brutality sticker. And instead of displaying that, it disappeared. No one knows where it went to. Um, we assume it got thrown away or burned or something. Um, the, the city did offer to buy, buy me a new one. And I said, no, that's fine. Um, there's also a bunch of, uh, pro-police artwork in the police department um, that I think should be addressed. And I don't know, I don't know my timer is, but, um, oh, thank you, Johnny. Um, Jeanette has been an asset in this. She has been working with us. Um, however, Chief Meeks has had ample opportunity in three months now to get in hold of me and he has done what I see his career has done where he's, he's with the department for a while. He's what they call a gypsy police officer. He's moved around quite a bit in the last few years. Uh, he was in center for a couple of years and then, um, I'm talking with Florida, get a FOIA request from them. Um, and then there was a, uh, just real quick, if I don't mind, there was another police department he was at that he was, there's investigation for, um, the evidence locker thing where that guy ended up with, uh, five years or eighteen, it was twelve years instead of a life sentence for murder. So that, that's why I had to say thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Connor? Saying none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, uh, wishing to comment on any item not on the agenda? I think no one else here in the, uh, chambers. I'll take a look at, uh, Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Moving on to the next, uh, agenda item, uh, assembly and legislative report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment, app users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the audience, but I do see a hand raised on Zoom for Mr. Uh, or Senator Jesse Bjorkman. Senator, you're up. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I'm not sure if you all can see me as your Zoom settings are a little bit different than what I'm used to. Can you guys see me on camera? Okay. Well, I'm not sure why that is. Um, but, um, happy to, uh, happy to be.
You just muted yourself. Okay, you're unmuted now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think we had some settings changed there. I think, uh, Madam Clerk Blankenship for providing that service. It's great to hear her voice again read, uh, a list of consent agenda items. Um, and certainly sad that she's no longer with the borough where we got to work together for some years, but she left, uh, her loyal deputy, uh, to run the show over there while she is with all of you here in the city of Soldatna. But I just wanted to visit with the council tonight and let you know that I am ready to head back to Juneau for another session that starts here on the sixteenth of January. And I stand ready to move forward with your city priorities and talk about your capital projects, um, both at the city level and, and borough level and things that the people of the city of Soldatna that will benefit from, uh, fire station and, and many other things as well. So I'm always available by phone or email. Feel free to contact me or stop by my office and I'm, I'm happy to meet with all of you and chat about things that matter to the city of Soldatna. I'm glad to see, um, really the, the Christmas in the park event that went so well earlier this month and so many great things that continue to happen in the city of Soldatna that are just community-based, family-friendly, good stuff. So thank you for allowing me some time to speak with you tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Cassidy.
I do have a question. Have you heard anything about the students from Soldatna High School trying to travel to Juneau for this next session?
I haven't heard of any specific plans. I did have the pleasure of speaking to some folks in Soldatna's government classes last week, and they talked about some of the issues and ideas that were on their hearts of community needs that they were seeing and, and educational needs that they were seeing in their schools regarding funding and parking and mental health and what kinds of lunch options they have over there at So High. And so I think that if students from So High wanted to travel to Juneau and engage in the legislative process, I am more than happy to receive them and make arrangements for them to take tours as well as see the college down there and whatever else that they might be interested in seeing in Juneau. I'm happy to help them out.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Thank you very much, Senator. Um, we will see you def- definitely down there in February when we come down for the annual AML meeting.
That sounds great, Mr. Mayor. Look forward to having you guys again.
Okay, take care. Have a good evening.
Thanks. You too. Bye.
Uh, I see no other hands raised on Zoom, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is administrative reports and it'll be done, the auditor's presentation by Joy Mariner of, uh, BDO USA. Welcome back again.
Hi, nice to see you as well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Shall I go ahead?
Go right on.
Okay. Well, um, first of all, I normally wear my suit coat, but it's sitting in the waiting room at Grant Aviation in Anchorage. So you get the normal joy today. I hope that helps facilitate more questions and, and, uh, in this process, you can, very approachable today because there's no suit coat between us. Um, also I feel kind of bad following the carrot. I don't think this will be as exciting of a presentation. I don't have kids with vegetable necklaces or a big giant carrot, but, um, I told Melanie when I got here today how very excited I am. And, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, first of all, you've had a huge year, uh, bond issuances, ARPA money getting spent. Um, changeover in your accounting department and city manager role. There have been a lot of things going on here in Soldatna this year that I would just say that affect accounting a lot. Um, I know they affect you and a lot of good things have come out of those, but it affects accounting a lot. And the, the second thing I would say is this is the very first one that of my cities we have issued this year and it is Melanie's report. So congratulations to Melanie. It's hot off the press. So my goal for, for our time today is to provide an overview of the audit results. That's going to be on this audit wrap-up report. Looks like this. It was dropped off of you today and I'll walk you through the highlights. And then, uh, I'm going to go through very briefly some of the financial results of the audit that are included in this packet. And I realize you have not had the chance to read every page. I'm sure you'll do that in all your spare time over the holidays. But, um, I, I want this to sort of whet your appetite to what you really need to know so that you can dig in further to the areas that you may be more interested in. Um, the decision was made by all of us that we would rather have this report here now versus issuing it yesterday and coming in in January. Uh, we thought getting the information to you quicker was better. And, uh, scheduling this right now seemed really appropriate and exciting for all of us. I know it's not exciting for you to have an audit report. It's exciting for us to be what I would consider to be on a more normal schedule. We're here where we normally issue in early December and we did. So, um, there's been a lot of barriers to that over the past few years with, um, some accounting standards and things. Um, so I'm pretty excited to be here and, um, I'll pause several times during this presentation. Feel free to ask questions along the way. Through the mayor, I'm happy to, um, to answer them as we go. And then I'll start here in a moment, but just congratulations, uh, to Vice Mayor Parker on your appointment and leadership appointment at AML last week. I'm sorry I wasn't there that day, but I did hear about it. So congratulations. Looking forward to seeing how AML is able to, to move forward, uh, the state here this year. So the audit wrap-up is our required communication to you as the council. I do work with, for you as the council and ultimately for the citizens of Soldatna. I'm based out of Anchorage. I've been working in your audit for quite a few years now. I've been in our office for about 21 years. And, um, really, it's really my passion to make sure that the financial statements, while there's a lot of what I would consider to be not useful for you information in them, that the, the financial statements are still usable to, um, anyone here on the council and you can see a couple of highlights in there, but our role is to not prepare these. These are prepared by Melanie. She's one of the few in the state that prepares her own financial report. Um, but rather to give you kind of a little bit more of a flavor of the things we look for on the financial statements. We come in and opine on the financial statements. We perform our test work in our audit to make sure that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. So let's cover a couple of highlights. Um, if you turn with me to page five, I'll start off by saying I took the picture on page five. Uh, that's down in Girdwood actually. I try to snap pictures when I'm places so I can have a picture that's from your community, but um, it was too cloudy the days I was here to make a good picture happen. So the status of our audit there is on page five of the audit wrap-up. It should look like this. Um, and this is just mentioning to you that we've completed our audit. It was issued yesterday. That's the third bullet point. Um, we issue actually several opinions and that's kind of outlined here in these three bullet points, bullet point three, four and five. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements. That's what you would want to have is a clean opinion on your financials. We also issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards. And this is a more robust, uh, level of standards that we have to do around compliance with laws and regulations, payroll law. Um, you know, various different, uh, laws that you have to follow. And then it also requires us to be even more independent. So we, as your, um, auditor has to, have to maintain independence in fact and in appearance. And then we also issued an unmodified or clean opinion on your compliance with your federal major program. And this year we tested ARPA. It's a new program for you. Um, that largely was spent on the field house this year and you still have quite a bit more ARPA money to be spent. Uh, the council did approve how that money was to be spent and, um, we did not find any findings that related to the ARPA program that we audited this year either. So that is kind of a clean, boring highlight there. Uh, the last bullet point here is I'll just mention that, you know, as usual, your team worked very hard to have everything ready. Uh, very, uh, on time. Everything was, um, excellent from a cooperation perspective. We come in here, we actually move in this room, so we take your seats from you and, uh, you know, go through a lot of samples, a lot of testing, a lot of, um, a, a lot of documentation. And we also test things from external sources. We look at confirmations from the banks or the attorneys, the insurance companies to make sure that the information we're getting from management is cooperated, um, by external sources as well. So a couple of quick things I'll touch on here. If you turn to page seven, that's the one with all the bubbles on it. Everything I'm, that's on the other pages I'm essentially covering. So don't worry, you're not missing out. Um, so the big things that I'll just mention here is none of your estimates are what I would consider to be significant. Meaning there are a lot of estimates in the statements, for example, your pension liability or some discount rates that you use, how collectible are your receivables? But none of them I would consider to be complex or really, um, your, your management team doesn't have any incentive to mistake them. They're not, um, being paid based on the total revenue coming into the city or anything like that. Um, so no significant estimates identified. Um, you did implement a new, a standard this year, Gazby ninety-six, and that's here for your subscription IT arrangements. Um, we poured through your records. I guess Melanie poured through them first and then we looked to verify she was correct. And we did not identify any significant subscription-based IT arrangements. If you remember last year, you implemented a new standard on leases, Gazby eighty-seven, and it was a big deal. You had a lot of receivables at the airport, leases at the airport, leases, um, kind of all over the city. Um, we were expecting more in the subscription IT environment, but nothing that was significant. I think there are plans in twenty-four to do more in that realm. So we'll see how that, that, um, flushes out. But just know as a council, if you're being asked to approve, um, subscription-based IT arrangements, basically IT contracts. Um, that's the way the world's moving. There's more of these happening. Just know that has an accounting impact. It's not a bad thing. It just goes on your financials. So you won't see any new accounts because of that standard this year. And then the other big thing that happened this year is you issued new bonds. Uh, that's a big deal, a $10 million bond issuance. The accounting for that is rather complex. Um, we actually worked with Melanie right after the bonds were issued. So those accounting, that accounting treatment was handled well before your year end. She had all the ducks in a row when we got here. And she worked with one of our specialists just to make sure everything was recorded correctly. Um, so that's a big change for you. And as you prepare for that capital project, and I know you've already started doing engineering and some of the design, um, we'll be testing the expenses associated with that. We also encourage you as a council to just be checking in on the bond compliance. When you issue bonds, it comes with strings attached, always does. So just asking the question periodically is a good idea. How's that going? Are we complying with arbitrage requirements or some of the spending requirements associated with the bonds? Um, okay, next page is our, our results of the audit related to corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We assist every year with recording some of the more technical accounting, uh, transactions related to your pensions, your leases. Um, and then this year there were two minor entries to accounts payable. What that means is there were some invoices that came in in July, August that, uh, related to two thousand and twenty-three that were recorded as part of the audit. Um, I would consider those to be fairly minor, um, and, uh, total amount that was adjusted was $67,000, uh, related to accounts payable. I'll touch on that here and again in just a moment because I want to touch on internal controls. And I don't know why they stapled it at the bottom. It's really hard to flip it that way.
That, that was the comment I made just a little bit ago.
Yeah, right. I'm, I'm confusing myself and going the wrong direction. Um, page 10 says internal control over financial reporting. So let me just mention briefly what our role is, um, as an auditor. We're responsible for understanding your key controls, making sure they were implemented through the year. So for example, if, um, one of your controls is that a time sheets are approved before they're paid, we can't just take your word for it. We look to see if there's a time sheet that was approved before it was paid. Um, but we don't necessarily have to test the controls that we're operating throughout the year. Depends on the type of class of transaction, how we're doing to test our, our, uh, work. And if something that we've identified is a key control that isn't designed properly, or it's not actually implemented properly throughout the year, we would bring that to your attention. If we think you need to take action on it, then it's something we would call a significant deficiency. You'd probably call that a finding. That's another word for it. And then, uh, or a material weakness if we think it's egregious enough that it would cause a material misstatement in your financials. So clean audit opinions in the, um, government auditing standard side, internal control or financial reporting, no findings this year. Um, the next page does have a few things that I would consider to be management letter comments. And I think it was two years ago, we started including these in here. We've always had them. These are minor points and things that we see at the city that, um, you can be aware of them or not, but I put them in writing now because I think they're interesting. It's good for people to know what kind of constraints your accounting team is under. And I would say all of these relate to having, um, a large amount of work going through a small amount of people. And you could hire a couple more people for Melanie's department. I'm sure she wouldn't be sad. Um, but from a budget perspective, generally city governments operate fairly, uh, efficiently is maybe the word to use, or lean is maybe a different word to use. Uh, your team in particular this year operated on a very streamlined, um, staffing process. And, uh, because of turnover, there were times where you had even fewer people in accounting than you should have had. Um, so for that reason, uh, there's a new one here. You've always had kind of the first two with your IT system design where, um, and I'll just, you know, we know who the super user is, so we just call her the super user's apt name. Um, in the first two relate to the IT system where your super user has access in the IT system to do things. We do verify that wasn't done. So for example, journal entries could be in theory posted by a super user without approval. We look at the backend to make sure that didn't happen during the year, or if it did, we look specifically and test those entries to make sure they were correct. Uh, this year there weren't any that were done, but if there had been, we would have caught those and tested them. Um, the second one is user access review. This is just looking to see who has access to what during the course of the year. Um, and documenting that that review was done. Those reviews are being done, just not necessarily documented. And the third one is new this year because, uh, you did have turnover in the accounting department. So the finance director was performing and approving the bank reconciliations. That being said, between Stephanie and then later Jeanette, there was review of every single bank transaction. And so the bank reconciliations are one of those things that I would prefer to have separate, the finance director not prepare, having the finance director review. I bring that to their attention just to know that during the course of the year, that was happening. There's a lot falling on one individual's shoulders. And then the accounts payable cutoff is there simply because of those two, um, payables that we found as part of the audit. I'd consider those to be pretty minor. Again, management letter point there, maybe department heads can step in and help a little bit if something's showing up in the wrong ear or reviewing budgets. Wait a minute, I think that one related to the service. Um, so that is really just from an accounting perspective, a lot happening in one department. So I'll pause there and ask, uh, if there are any questions with the internal controls. So I'll pause there and ask if there are any questions with the internal controls or the journal entries before we look at the statements.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Joy. And you mentioned that the city audit is boring, and you know, that's good that it's boring. But though on the bank reconciliation review, you're recommending that it not be done by the finance director. Who would you recommend that do that reconciliation on the bank statements?
You know, it varies pretty significantly from city to city depending on who, who is adequately trained to do that. And you can have even a clerk level person do the physical part of the bank reconciliation where they get the download from the bank, and they're just checking to make sure the IT system has all the same transactions that the bank has. Usually it's kind of a mid-level employee, kind of a senior accountant or a controller level person who performs the bank rec. Okay, the rest of the wrap up essentially says that we had no difficulties, disagreements, issues, no fraud or abuse identified. I would have called the mayor way earlier if we had had anything like that happen. As usual, the audit went well, and this year in particular. You know, I'm just blown away by the ability to put this together here in this timeline. And so let's cover just a couple of brief highlights on the ACFER. So the annual comprehensive financial report, I'm sure you want me to go through all hundred and twelve pages of it, but I'm not going to. So let's just turn to the table of contents, which is under the intro section. So at least you know what's here. I think most of you are familiar faces, so you remember, I'm sure with all super interest what's in here, but let's have a couple of highlights. Introductory section has some things like your letter of transmittal, which yours is really well-written. It's an overview of your city. If you're kind of traveling to Texas and to some meeting and you want to give an overview of who Soldat is, that's a great place to turn. I know you know who your city is, but some great stats in there and just a description of what you do and what services you provide. You did receive the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. I said that wrong. Certificate of achievement for excellence. There you go. Based on last year's statements, did meet the criteria for a certificate. So congratulations to Melanie on that. And then a list of principal officials and an org chart. The next section is your financial section. The auditor's report, I'm not going to go through that. We covered the results already. But the management discussion and analysis is sort of like a, you know, nine-page overview or eight-page overview of your financial results. And discussion of what happened from one year to the next. If you look at nothing else, read the M D N A. And the M D N A, I would just say, in particular, page nine and ten of the M D N A is the most helpful. So I'm not going to go through that, but I would just say that kind of gives you an overview of the changes from last year to this year and the why behind those changes. So as you look through this statement in your spare time over the holidays, if you have questions about the why, the M D N A is going to give you those answers. The basic financial statements follow, which gives you information by fund for the financial results of the city for the year. And then the next page of the table of contents, you can see there's a lot of other info, right? So the the, the whole left side of this page is required information as well as supplementary information. And that gives you more detail of your pensions on each fund. So if you want more information, for example, about what happened in the street assessment special revenue fund, you can go and get that detail there. This is a historic record, something that's kept on the shelf. So it's available to you. And then the statistical section is usually the most exciting for people here on the council because you can always look and see who your largest taxpayers are, what's your ratios of debt. If you want to know kind of changes over a ten-year period of time, this will give you those trends. The last section is your single audit report and with the, the results of the single audit on the very last page. So let's turn now to the page thirteen. And the statement of net position is going to show you a snapshot on one day of what you had in assets, the things that you owned and what's in liabilities that you owe to others. And what's left over is net position. This is not at a fund level. This is overall for the entire city everywhere. So you can see things like land on here or property and equipment and service. This building is sitting in here under property. Also, your cash and investments are there, twenty-two million dollars in cash and investments. Those are most of your assets. And then under liabilities, you have twenty-three million dollars of liabilities, almost twenty-four million. You can see that larger now bond payable number is one of your largest liabilities. And then your net pension liability is the other liability that's large. You can't pay that off. That's going to take probably thirty more years before that goes away at the statewide level. I would like to note, however, you do have a net OPEB asset. If you look in the asset section, the other post-employment benefit plans at the state, those are the healthcare plans and the disability plan, those plans. It's actually in an asset position of three point three million. So none of those two is about five million dollars as a liability. So the number is actually going down. OPEB's overfunded in a sense. Where the, the PERS plan is underfunded. So let's look and see what's happening at a fund level. And I want to look at page seventeen. Because this is where you live most of the time when you get reports from finance and the budget to actuals, those kinds of things. So your total governmental revenues, overall, the city's operating on a seven, sixteen point seven million dollars in revenue and eighteen million dollars of expenses. Keep in mind that the reason why your revenues exceed expenses can be explained if you look at the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund. So really got to make that a little shorter for me. It's hard to say. Because you're spending so much in capital outlet, it shows up as a budgeted expense. You're planning for that, essentially that reduction. That excess of expenses over revenues because you've issued bonds to pay for that. If you look at the general fund, your total general fund expenditures of twelve point four million dollars. The general fund's essentially at break even for two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-two thousand dollars to the positive. I will just note that you have an unassigned fund balance of nine point four million. So you've got about nine months or so of expenditures available in your unassigned fund balance. That's really what I would consider to be healthy and stable for municipal government. I get nervous when that number falls below about six months. So it's something to monitor. Melanie and I were just talking about this today about kind of budgeting for your future debt payments and what's that debt load look like. And that's a kind of a newer thing. It has been a few years before you've had to really watch your budgeting and your cash flow as it relates to debt payment. So it's something to continue to monitor as a council. And then there were transfers out for the field house. Sorry, the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund. And so the, the new project, those monies were transferred out of the general fund to cover your, essentially your portion of that project that you're planning to cover. All in line with your approved council amounts. So in total net change in the fund balance for the general fund did reduce by the transfer essentially that you had planned for. The other funds here are doing fairly well. When you look at the public utility fund, you are generating enough to cover your debt service payment, but not necessarily your depreciation. So that's something to just kind of keep in mind as the system ages, you are paying for the debt. The debt load from the loans that you have taken in the past on the public utility fund. And then the airport is also essentially at a break even this year. Keep in mind that also is not covering depreciation at the airport. That's really just a cash type of impact. So the airport depreciation is tough for any community to cover, especially since FAA is paying for a lot of the, the construction occurring at the airport. You've spent a lot of the COVID nineteen special revenue fund money down, which is expected as you had that relief money finishing out in two thousand and twenty-three. And then some of the ARPA money is being allocated through to your various capital project funds that you approved as part of that budget. So that's really what I wanted to live on the statements. If you have questions about any of the numbers you're seeing on there, besides looking at the M D N A, you can always go to the notes to the statements. They provide more detail. So you can see detail or information about the transfers that were made. The debt that you have outstanding, what's in fund balance in more detail. I don't really have the time to do that with you today, but as you look through these over the next few weeks, if you have questions, please reach out to to Jeanette, and then she can get the question to Melanie and to me. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. Because these are your financials. They matter a lot to the city to have a clean opinion and have good, solid financials that are timely. So we're here and available to help you as you process these and as you review them. And then I'll finish up on page one twelve, which is the very last page. And I did mention that you did have unmodified opinions, but this is what gets submitted to the White House. So next week it's getting submitted to the White House. It's due within thirty days, and I don't think anybody wants it going past the twenty-third. So this is what we submit through to the White House along with a financial statement copy. Unmodified, a bunch of no's where it's asking about findings or non-compliance. You are considered a low risk quality. And so just want to, you know, congratulate your team here under Jeanette's leadership. Melanie really having a banner year and a lot of lift. I just want to thank you for working with us again this year. And happy to answer any questions you have on the financial statements.
Any questions from the council? Any comments? This is a great report. It saves me money on sleeping pills. But thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Do a great, great job every year. And our finance director for life, Melanie does an absolutely great job, and so does her staff. So thank you very much.
Yeah, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item is public hearings, testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. And that will be ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four, enacting Soldatna Municipal Code, Chapter three point one six, lodging tax, amending section three point zero eight point zero one zero tax levied amount, amending section three point zero eight point zero three zero, borough collection of sales tax, payment in full, and amending section one point zero five point zero eight zero, minor offense fine schedule introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. Report from Vice Mayor Parker, and we already have a motion on the floor to enact this. So Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. As I mentioned both at the meeting when this ordinance was introduced in our last meeting in November. This is a, a pretty basic ordinance. It would be a four percent lodging tax. There would be a dedicated fund set up within this, the city budget where those funds would be deposited and would be used exclusively for visitor enhancements within, within the city, within the city. And we made that amendment at the meeting in November. The effective date of the ordinance would be January first, twenty twenty-five, so it would not be immediately. And in the course of the next year, we would work with local businesses to establish and get them certified within, within the city. So that is a general overview of, of the ordinance and love to hear the public comment.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
We're tag teaming. My name is Kelly Johnson. I'm with Aspen Hotels of Alaska. Do you want my home address or business address?
Business address is fine.
Business address would be three two six Binkley Circle, Soldatna, Alaska. So we are representing Aspen Hotel Soldatna. We've already provided testimony against the four percent bed tax. We're here to speak more on that today. We believe that implementing this tax and calling it a tourism enhancement fund is questionable integrity, given that the funds are not going back to tourism and lodging. They're going back to the general fund, which is a different story and we feel is just going to be an additional expense to our tourists that over time is going to lead them to stay elsewhere to save that money. Let's not forget that the lodging industry is not subject to the five hundred dollar cap rule. So we're already unjustly taxed in lodging. So let's say if you stay at Aspen for a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a night for twenty nights, you're paying that tax in the full amount. It's not capped at five hundred. That can quickly become an expense that myself, you, her, any one of us could probably not afford out of pocket or would take some substantial time to recover from. So again, they're likely to stay in neighboring communities like Kenai, and we would lose out on that. So Aspen is again standing firm on voting no.
I think it's fair to say that's not just going to affect the people coming here as tourists. It's going to affect Alaskans. We have a good peak summer where tourists come in, but our bread and butter is honestly Alaskan people traveling for business. Alaskans coming down here to visit their family members and friends. Alaskans coming for the school trips and the school sporting events, and they're going to be subject to this four percent sales tax, a bed tax. If you have a company that is going to send workers down here for twenty days, that's going to be an extra ninety-five dollars. Times that by five rooms, that's almost five hundred dollars added to the budget of this work plan for them, and that is going to matter to them. So they will go ten minutes up the road to Kenai, save five hundred dollars. That also means that then Soldatna is losing out on that sales tax revenue from them staying in Soldatna. That also means that those guests, they'll be going to the Kenai Safeway to buy their groceries for their stay. They're going to be going to Kenai McDonald's. They're going to go eat at Louis' instead of Michael's, and it's going to have a triple down effect to all the businesses down here. I know at the first meeting, someone mentioned that Anchorage has a bed tax and it didn't affect the Aspen at all, but that's in the Anchorage Bowl. If you can't get out of the Anchorage Bowl, you're going to have a bed tax. We have Kenai, our sister town right there, which Anchorage doesn't have that. And I really do feel that it will be affected. Sooner or later, Alaskans will realize that they can save four percent of their stay by just going ten minutes up the road, and we're going to lose out on revenue from the sales tax.
Any questions or comments from the council? Saying none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two four, three four, excuse me. Please step up here to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Shackleton. I live at three eight five Lingan Berry Lane, Soldatna. And I'm not supportive of this tax, mostly because pretty much created by the council. I don't know that there's very much public outcry for this tax. I don't believe it's really necessary. And for those reasons, I'm, I'm not wanting to support this tax.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Saying none, thank you very much for your testimony. Anyone else in the chamber is wishing to speak on this? Three minutes and please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, everybody. Steve Manley, three eight five West Arlington Avenue. I think the memo for this ordinance is laid out pretty well. I sent an email to the council at the first introduction in support of it. For all of the reasons that were outlined in the memo, I think the city does a tremendous job with enhancing our community with trails and parks and the sports center. And visitors coming to the town and to support that effort will help enhance all of those efforts further. We're all sort of accustomed to this being part of an expense that we carry when we travel, and I think we're missing out by not having it in place like Seward has in some other communities in Alaska. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Saying none, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Steve.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four? Now please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Um, wow, this is, yeah. My name is Ishaa Optal, four one five Lingan Berry Lane. I just want to quickly apologize. I didn't, not fully informed about this. Kind of was told about this a couple of days ago, but am I allowed to ask questions?
Well, ask the question. We'll see if we're going to answer it.
I was curious. I've just seen, this is my first city hall. I see that everything is cause and effect, and it seems like this is an effect. And I was curious what the cause was for it, like, was the public asking for it or where did it come from? Like, what was, what's the reasoning behind it?
City manager, do you have a response to that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to defer to the, the sponsor of the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, sir. I didn't get your name.
My name is Ishaa.
Can you spell that, please?
I I S H A.
I I S H A.
School was fine.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Um, so, so the cause, this is something that has been talked about for many years. Um, and the last conversations that I had were back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And that was with the then executive director for the Soldatna Chamber of Commerce. And this is something that the tourism industry here on the Kenai Peninsula, back when there was the Kenai Peninsula Tourism Marketing Council. Had advocated for, and this was something that they were continuing to advocate for. To help support the tourism industry and advocate on behalf of tourism here. Um, in Soldatna in the central peninsula. Um, so that's part of the cause. The other is um, during the course of conversations with. Um, people not only here, but in other parts of the state, they were like. I thought Soldatna already had a bed tax in place, so it's something that people thought was here. Um, something that has been advocated by some parts of the tourism industry. Not some other parts of the tourism industry. So that is, that is the cause.
And then um, just my last question, what was the issue with the tourism before? Like, what is the outreach for this? Like, what was uh, what was the issue that we're adding the tax? Like, where did it come from?
So as, as I mentioned, this was something when KPTMC was talking about it, it was for. Advocating on behalf of tourism and getting more awareness of. This, this area, and. Since it was requested by the Aspen Hotel that there be this dedicated fund set up, we did amend the code at the, the proposed ordinance at the last meeting. So that the funds would get dedicated to this tourism enhancement fund, and we're going to use it to. Should it get enacted for improving parks, fields, advocating on behalf of. You know, come, come visit Soldatna, come stay in Soldatna. It's, it, you know, it's a great place. And, and it's something where these funds could be used for the, those purposes.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. I just would like to, wanted to get some more information. Um, I just wanted to state that I am not in support of this tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four? And please state your name and address for the record.
Nicholas Connor again, uh, seven thirty-five Cahill. Uh, I, I wish I would have told you guys that, cause it's a really nice place that no one knows about, but um. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you, um, Mayor Whitney and City Manager Bauer. And Vice uh, Mayor Parker for bending the rules of the Roberts Rules for education of the public. I really appreciate that. Um, I also am not in favor of, of it. What I have seen is, is um. There has been a five hundred dollar cap for a long time, and I've talked to uh, different people about that. I think the five hundred dollar sales cap. Cap is low. It was something that was back in the eighties. Um, if, and with inflation were to happen, it'd probably be up like twenty-five hundred dollars. The tax, people have voted not to increase taxes. But then when it comes to, don't increase my taxes, but you could tax them over there. I think that's where it runs into. Um, there's the, you guys have a s- strong. Uh, I'm sorry, you have a difficult. Job with but managing the budget. People always want money. Nobody wants to give it. But I think that this would cause problems also with like Airbnbs and different apps that are coming out all the time where people can rent their houses. Nobody knows about it. Um, camping, um, people could just choose to, that's gonna, you know, do they pay bed tax on camping? What if you sleep in your car? So is it just going after the, the rich hotels and we're just like, you know? Uh, we'll let them pay for it, cause we don't want to, and that's what I'm concerned about. If there is an issue where we're not making enough taxes. Then the, the people need to really look at the five hundred dollar tax cap and say, this is too low. And it's a, it's a burden, and we should get the money from there, not taxing people that aren't yourselves, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Chilson?
Uh, if I may, I just wanted to respond to your comments about us um, specifically targeting established hotels and kind of letting, you know, like the B and B type operations kind of slip by and not kind of pay their due with this. Um, we are working in collaboration with the borough on a framework for tracking uh, short-term rentals within the city, and uh, they're also working on areas outside the city, of course. Uh, and, and part of that is making sure that we're aware of which ones are operating within the city, making sure they're adhering with permitting requirements. And my understanding is that if this were to be enacted, it would be fairly applied to all lodging establishments within the city, including B and Bs, and there would be compliance enforcement with that. And please correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that would be my, would be my understanding.
And if I may, just the biggest thing is with the apps, like there's Turo now, where, cause I deal with cars all day, and people can rent a car, and. Nobody knows about it. I mean, it, it's, people buy on Amazon. It's hard to pay taxes on that. I mean. I, I do understand where you're coming from. I just think it, there's a slippery slope where people could probably, under the radar, get away from it.
It certainly is a game of whack-a-mole to a certain extent, but I appreciate the feedback.
Uh, thank you, Jordan.
Anything else? If not, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four? Saying no one, I'll look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Uh, having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back for the council. Any council comments? I'll call for the vote then.
Uh, I. Did we actually make a motion to? We went straight into comments. I didn't hear a motion to enact.
That was done the last.
The last meeting, okay.
Um, any other comments? Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to take me a moment to kind of compose my thoughts on this. I know this has been kind of a. Somewhat longstanding issue for a couple of meetings here, and we've heard a lot of public uh. Feedback on this, and I appreciate everyone that came out tonight to share their opinions on both sides of this. Um. I'll say that, you know, no one likes taxes. I get it, you know, anytime the discussion of an additional tax comes up, it's always gonna be a difficult decision. Uh, especially when those taxes um. Don't really present changes that are visible in our community immediately and feel like they're just. Supporting the status quo or just going into the general fund, as we've heard concerns uh, shared tonight. Um. But I think what makes this, this particular tax different and, and why I can get behind it is because this isn't something that's necessarily going into the general fund. I look at this as something that's an investment in our community to drive economic development. Um. And I appreciate uh, Vice Mayor Parker's amendment that she brought forward at our last meeting. Um, to provide guide rails uh, to this with language that specifically kind of steers this towards things that are for tourism and economic development within our city. And I don't think it's anybody's interest here on this body. Um, to see legislation that's gonna harm our local businesses. I, I would not support that if that were, if I believe that to be the case. I, I strongly believe that when we invest into tourism enhancement in our community, we are supporting our small businesses and continuing to develop Soldatna in a way that's gonna draw people here and fill our hotels. And like anything that we pass as a council, we don't necessarily have to lock in and adhere to it for, in perpetuity. If, if we, if we pass this and, and we see data that comes to us over the next year or two that shows this is harming our hotels, you bet we're gonna be looking at reevaluating this and peeling it back. Um, or at least I would be advocating for that. Um, I, I don't wanna see additional taxes based on our residents. Um, and I, I think this is something that has a lot of potential benefit for our community. Um. Being carried by people that are, that are coming through, not necessarily people that live here in Soldatna. Um, so I, I am grateful that we're having this discussion and considering this tonight. Um, my concern with this is that I don't feel like it is going far enough to restrict it um, specifically for tourism enhancements. Um, I, I, like I said, I'm grateful that we had the additional language that was added with the amendment on use of the funds, but um, as that's currently written right now. Um, it's still fairly open in its use. It's more like soft guidelines and actual requirements, so. Uh, to that end, um, I have just a couple very minor language changes that I think would clean that up and, and hopefully be a good middle ground compromise on that. Um, the first one I would like to look at is if you look at section three sixteen zero six zero Tourism Enhancement Fund dash Use of Fund. Uh, section C, uh, that line reads the proceeding, uh, the proceeds contained in the Tourism Enhancement Fund may be used for, but not limited to the following. Uh, I would move to strike that last portion that says, but not limited to the following. And really what that's gonna do is, is rather than basically give a list of suggestions. Require that we follow those, those tourism options, and. If there's ever an additional reason that we wanna spend money that's not in that list, we as a council have the ability to pass ordinance to expand, but I think that needs to be an actual legislative change at that point in time.
You have a motion here, and we need a second out of people.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second on that motion to amend. Thank you, uh, Ms. Hutchings.
Um, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll try to be brief, but just again, reiterating, uh, I'm proposing that we strike the but not limited to the following language on section C of three sixteen zero six zero to enforce use in those categories. And I'd be happy to stand for any additional questions on my thoughts behind that. So. Striking, but not limited to the following.
It would read, the proceeds contained in the Tourism Enhancement Fund may be used for the following. And then there's the list.
Got it. Go ahead, discussion. Saying no further discussion, we'll call for the vote on the uh, amendment, amendment.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Perry?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
The amendment uh, has a passed on a four-two, four-two vote. Further discussion?
Um, I have two more minor changes I'm gonna propose, and I thank you for your patience on this tonight, so. Um, looking again at three sixteen zero six zero, section C. Um, subsection two specifies renovation and or maintenance for. Um, I would move to strike and slash or maintenance. I appreciate a second at least for discussion on that, so I can share thoughts.
May I have a second on that uh, motion? Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Um, I am proposing that we strike the N slash or maintenance on that section. Um, just for the uh, the concerns that we've had about this money being used for operational funds. Um, I, I believe that the goal of this, of this tax is. To enhance our community and, and drive tourism activity and not maintain the status quo, and I think that's key, is not maintaining the status quo, but doing something new and beyond what we have established in the city and. Enhancing our, our economic activity here. Um, and I think maintenance would definitely category, be categorized as an operational expense, so if we're gonna use this money, it needs to be used for something that's, that's new and enhancing our city, so that's why I'm proposing we remove maintenance.
Further discussion? Ms. Whackler?
Um, bear with me, but can, is there a definition um, between the two renovation or maintenance where defining or removing maintenance? You can tell me exactly what would, like if we were to um. Extend the Soldatna Parks stage out slightly by adding an awning, is that maintenance or?
I would consider that a renovation, and I would, I would open up Kyle to jump in on this, cause he'd probably be able to speak more authoritatively, but. My understanding of that would be when you remodel, you, you add functionality, you materially change what has been established. That would be a renovation versus. Okay, we're gonna do new, we're gonna, you know, repaint something that's peeling, or we're gonna like replace a broken boiler or something like that. These are more operational costs in my mind, but. I don't know. If there's any additional thoughts on that, that's where I stand.
Any further comment, discussion? Saying none, we'll call for the vote on the second amendment.
Parker? Um, yeah. Perry?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
Amendment number two passes on a five-one vote. Further discussion?
Okay, last one I promised, and I'll be quick on this one. Um, three sixteen zero six zero, section C subsection six, that specifies that simply bond debt service is an acceptable use. Um, I would propose that we just add a simple verbiage at the end of bond debt service to say. Bond debt service in support of items defined in three sixteen zero six zero, section C.
May I have a second?
Thank you. Uh, and again, this, this gets back to um, really ensuring that we have structured language, that we are using these funds specifically for tourism enhancement, economic development. Um, and as that is currently written, um, I would, I would understand this to be usable for any bond for any purpose in the city, not necessarily those that support tourism or economic development. So I appreciate your support on this amendment. That would be my last one.
Any discussion? Mr. Carey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would certainly support this. Um, this is all about paying off the bond, and so I think this makes the whole point of this uh, much more truthful. So I think this is a wonderful amendment.
Any other discussion, comments? We'll call for the vote on the third amendment.
Nelson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Uh, amendment three passes on a six-zero vote, so ordinance uh. Twenty twenty-three dash zero three four as amended is uh, further discussion. Saying none, Mr. Carey?
I wanna start by saying I respect the good faith of everyone working on this. And I hope the same is held for me. One of the dynamics of American history has been the use of taxation by government. And discussion about the amount of taxes government should levy, and how much people should be required to pay. In our earliest American history. Two Supreme Court cases were considered the most important. One was Marbury versus Madison, and the other was McCulloch versus Maryland. Those two are known as the M and M cases because of uh, those letters. McCulloch versus Maryland, statesman Daniel Webster and Chief Justice John Marshall stated. An unlimited power to tax involves necessarily a power to destroy. Keeping this in mind, I have a profound responsibility when it comes to determining of the rate of taxation. That the city of Soldatna will impose on those doing business here and those living here. Excessive taxation can be a statement regarding what we do not want in the city. Are we saying we do not want this activity in Soldatna? It should go somewhere else, and so should the tourist that benefit from the service. I'm trying to keep in mind an economic balance stated in an anonymous quote. A fine. Is a tax for doing something wrong. A tax is a fine for doing something right. By placing this bed tax now, are we implying that these individuals have been poor citizens and not paying their fair share? Should this tax be perceived as a punishment to correct past injustices? These commercial establishments and individuals have not been causing economic harm to this community. By underpaying for the services the government has provided. How high will this new bed tax be in the future? Is this just the special introductory rate? With the goal being to double the rate of taxation in the near future to match Anchorage? I have directly voted on over a dozen city of Soldatna budgets. At no time was it stated that the city did not have enough money to provide the necessary services for the community. In fact. We've had a surplus every year. If the city of Soldatna has uncovered since the bond issue. For the field house, a new financial crisis in twenty twenty-three. What are the other groups and activities? what are the other groups and activities that we're going to consider placing taxes on? Which other industries or groups are we going to be taxed higher because of their success? Or because they have decided that Soldatna is their desired home? Might some see this as a statement that Soldatna does not want people doing business here? And we heard that two meetings ago in terms of discussion here, two meeting discussions on this. There are some who will proudly state that this is only going to take money out of the pockets of people who do not live here. That does not make this a just tax. To say I only wish to steal from strangers is still stealing. Should we be teaching situational ethics to our kids? Many of the people who will be affected by this bed tax are family members visiting us in the community or those society and they can't afford to stay in Soldatna. Also, a lot of sports people in terms of coming here, people involved in athletics and sports. This is the time of year when there's great discussion about a couple in Bethlehem who could not find room in the inn. The Romans forced the couple to travel to Bethlehem so that more taxes could be levied. The Romans were always looking for opportunistic exploitation. So were the British before the American Revolution. I do not believe this new taxation is necessary. I believe we should be assisting local businesses. This is once again, local government saying that they could make better decisions than citizens can when it comes to spending their money. Bah, humbug.
Any other comments from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
I'll start off by saying happy holidays and merry Christmas. So I want to start off by emphasizing that this is not a tax on businesses, but it is a tax on visitors who stay in our local lodging establishments. It's not a tax on local residents. It's a tax on visitors. It's been interesting in talking to people about this issue as a lot of people think that Soldatna already has a lodging bed tax and they were surprised that that we do not. Throughout the world, tourists pay bed and lodging tax. And I have traveled around the world and I know many of you have as well. And you have paid those taxes and those fees that are added on by the hotels that oftentimes when you make your reservation, it doesn't show you what those additional fees are going to be, but you see it when you check out. Currently in the United States, forty-seven states have a hotel occupancy tax. Alaska, Nevada, and California are the three states that do not have a statewide tax. But cities within these states have a lodging tax along with other fees that are added when a tourist is visiting. And I see it repeatedly when I travel and I get my, my statement and a recent one I had, I was paying two-thirds, my, my bill for my lodging establishment was nine hundred dollars. My additional fees on top of that were six hundred dollars. So I paid almost as much in the fees as I did in my lodging. In Alaska, we have forty-nine municipalities that have a bed or lodging tax. And in the memo that I provided to the council in October, I identified the range of what those are. But we have here on the peninsula, the city of Seward that has a bed tax that has collected last year over seven million dollars or seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, in, in lodging fees. And when I have traveled from Kaktovik up in the Alaska National Wildlife Refuge to Unalaska, I have paid a bed tax to that community. Soldatna does serve as an economic hub and is a popular destination point for visitors. People don't make their decisions on where to stay or travel based on if there is a bed or lodging tax, but if it fits their needs. And Soldatna and the Central Peninsula has continued to fit people's needs. And as we talked about earlier, the monies generated would be directed towards tourism-related activities here in the Soldatna area, which is currently those fees associated or activities associated at the visitor center, the sports center, field house, our playgrounds, our trails, our ball fields are paid for by the residents of Soldatna at this time. If enacted, as I mentioned earlier, the ordinance would go, would not go into effect until January of twenty twenty-five, a year from now. Recently, sales tax from hotel and lodging establishments in FY twenty-two in Soldatna were five point two million dollars. In fiscal year twenty-three, this increased to just over six million dollars, an increase of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I know some of the hotels have said they haven't seen necessarily the increase, but the number of establishments that we have in the area that are providing lodging, whether it's Airbnbs, B and Bs, VRBOs, hotels, motels, it's an extensive list. And this tax wouldn't impact everybody, not just the hotels and motels. If we had a four percent sales tax in place, it would have generated two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in this fiscal year. And these funds would have been used to further enhance community and tourist-related activities. Again, this isn't a tax on local businesses or local residents, but it's a tax paid by visitors like you do when you, when you pay, when you travel. I would urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Saying none, we'll call, oh, before I do that. We did receive a number of email comments and written comments from other people. One was received just before this meeting started. I will say it was in opposition to the sales, the lodging tax. But unfortunately, the email disappeared between reading it and trying to make a copy of it. So we'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Perry?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
You have five yes, one no.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three four passes on a five-one vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three five, amending Soldatna Municipal Code two point zero five, city mayor and vice mayor to include a provision for vice mayor pro tem introduced by the mayor. May I have a motion to enact? I'll thank you, Ms. Hutchings.
I'll make a motion to enact.
Mr. Chilson for the second. Report from the mayor. As I mentioned the last time around, it, this hasn't happened very often, but there has been at least one meeting that I've attended where the mayor was unable to vote or was not there and the vice mayor in same position. And discussion then started, who handles the gavel after that? So this just clarifies that the most senior member of the, of the council would take over. So that is all. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the council chambers wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three five? Saying none, I'll look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Vice Mayor Parker.
So I just wanted to know, how do we define senior member? Is that by tenure on the council? And at this point, who would that be?
Was by age, it'd be me, but no, it'd be by who's been on the council longest.
Question if I may, so how do you define longest? Is it longest continual term from where you actually are now or total time? Because I think I've, my current term is longer than Mr. Carey's, but he's had a lot more service than I do. And I would consider him senior to me if you don't, if you count non-consecutive terms.
My interpretation would be it would be who's currently serving the law.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three five passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three six, accepting grant funds from the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the general fund to attend the biannual Public Library Association Conference introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings? Have a second. Mr. Carey? Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Thankfully, the public library has been awarded a continuing education grant and the employee has been awarded to Stacy Klein. And for the twelve hundred and fifty dollars, she will be able to attend the Public Library Association Conference. And the city will be reimbursed up to twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Our city librarians here, if there are any questions about the grant specifically, this ordinance appropriates the funds that have been awarded.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three six? Seeing no one, I'll look at Zoom and there's no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three six passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents in the general fund for a donation received from the Central Peninsula Health Foundation introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey? May I have a second, please? Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. These funds will be used to purchase educational materials, including consumer health, low literacy, and culturally appropriate resources. And again, if there are further questions, the library directors.
Are there any, can't even talk. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three seven? And please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Kathy Gensel at three sixty Green Court, Soldatna. And I have many for you.
Oh, okay.
Yay. So Central Peninsula Health Foundation, we had a fund, the Health Resource Library at the hospital that has since been done away with because they needed that room for something else. And so I am here to give the Soldatna Library two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I know the library appreciates it very much.
You bet. Thank you. We appreciate your support over the years, so.
Any comment or questions from the council?
I'd just like to say thank you, Kathy, for all you and your foundation do.
Thank you.
Ms. Whackler?
I wanted to use this opportunity to remind everybody about the amazing resources that are getting developed at our library. And I don't mean just books, because there is this really cool section where they're putting things like tools that you can rent, kits for learning to knit and crochet, as well as like, there's a backpack with like an explorer thing with like binoculars and compasses. And I just think the public, you know, needs to hear about all the really cool stuff that Rachel's doing. And then I know that we had accepted funds that were donated for the, I don't know what you would call it, Rachel, you can tell me, but where the computers where a baby can sit in an enclosed environment so the mom can use that. And those are in operation now. And our libraries are awesome. Just thank you.
Anything from the council for the, okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I'm sure Rachel will put it to good use. Okay. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three seven? Seeing no one, I'll look at Zoom and there's no hands raised in Zoom. Having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Chilson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yeah.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three seven passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund for the city's joint participation in the Kenai Peninsula Borough's Safe Streets and Roads for all, for all assistance grant through the United States Department of Transportation introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move to enact ordinance twenty twenty-three zero three eight.
May I have a second, please? Mr. Nelson, thank you very much. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do, turn this over to our Director of Economic Development for a report. This is an ongoing item that you've seen before. However, if the director could refresh our memory on it.
Sure. Thank you. This is a grant program that's offered by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Their goal is zero deaths and reducing serious injuries on our roads. And it's really a two-part funding program that the US DOT is offering to receive implementation funds to make our, our roads safer. We need to have a comprehensive safety strategy and planning document developed, and that's what these funds would do. We're partnering with the Kenai Peninsula Borough who is, who has applied for the grants. All of the municipalities within the borough have agreed to be partners with it. And the one point two million was awarded to the, to the borough. Our share, as we agreed upon back in two thousand and two, we estimated that our share would be around twenty thousand dollars and what it came to is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. So this would appropriate those funds for our participation with the borough and the development of this plan.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight? Saying no one, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Nelson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yeah.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars in the general fund, seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars in the utility fund and two thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars in the airport fund for the city's deferred compensation employee benefit program introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I'll move to enact twenty twenty-three zero three nine.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance follows the previous ordinance adopted by council allowing the implementation of the deferred comp employee benefit program and appropriates the funds to implement the program. The program, the policy has been written, the program has The program, the policy has been written, the program has, um, it will fully implement on January first. And we have worked with Mission Square to set it up as, um, stated through the policy.
Thank you. Uh, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Our ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine passes on a six-zero vote. The next items on the agenda is new business, and all that fell under the consent agenda. So we'll move on to item ten, which is mayor and council reports. Couple of things here, uh, Vice Mayor Parker and myself, uh, and Ms. Whackler attended the AML, uh, conference in Anchorage this last month. Oh, and the city manager, of course, and the Melanie M. Holt, uh, Finance Director, and the city clerk, Johnny Blankenship. And I believe there probably was somebody else there too, but I can't remember who. Um, yeah, and my congratulations to Vice Mayor Parker. She was elected as Vice President of the Alaska Municipal League for this coming year. And I was re-elected to another two-year term on the Board of Directors. Uh, it was a very, very well-attended, uh, meeting, had some great, uh, great presentations. Um, a lot of things are coming up, and, uh, so the next, uh, meeting, uh, will be the, uh, legislative meeting in Anchorage, excuse me, in June or in, in February, and I don't know what those dates are right now. Uh, there was eleven resolutions passed, and, uh, as soon as I get the copies of those eleven resolutions, uh, with the new amendments to them, I'll make sure a copy of them gets forwarded to each of you. Uh, at that conference, we received an award. It was the Alaska Municipal League Excellence in Local Government, Economic and Work Environment, Employment, Income, Retail Business, the City of Soldatna Recruitment and Retention Strategies Enhanced Competitives Program. And that was awarded us for the, uh, retention program, recruitment retention program that we worked on here a few months back, and one of the ordinances you just passed for the deferred compensation. Now, there's a whole, almost a two-page thing, and I'm not going to read it. If you want it, we can get you a copy of it. Uh, other awards, the, um, City of Soldatna this afternoon at the, um, Chamber of Commerce received the Community Partner, um, Award. That's for being, uh, contributing to the Chamber of Commerce. Then, uh, Kyle Cornelis also received an award, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce this afternoon as, uh, I forgot what the title was, um, government, uh, employee or something like that. Something good, something good. And congratulations, Kyle. And the last one we have received is, uh, City of Soldatna, thank you for sponsoring our youth boys and girls' club basketball season twenty twenty-three. And that was, uh, I believe that, uh, tall guy in the back with a beard, it might be Kyle Cornelis. He was trying to be a ringer and, and, uh, playing with them, but, uh, they caught him real quick. Oops. Uh, let's see. I have one concern, um, we talk about highway safety and everything. I was sitting there at, um, exiting the Fred Meyer's parking lot the other day, and, uh, it was a little snowy out there, and, uh, roads weren't completely clear yet. And I watched vehicles coming down off that hill into town through that, uh, traffic signal at well over the posted speeds on those thirty-five miles an hour. They were doing forty-five, fifty. And I'm not talking about just little vehicles. There was one that was a, uh, uh, double-length, um, semi-truck. Uh, I don't know if it's our responsibility to be enforcing speed on that road, or if it's the state troopers, but somebody needs to do it before we have some serious accidents there. Uh, yeah, it's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, and even for people going up the hill, they're well over the speed limit because they want to get through that red light quicker, and they'll be going forty-five, fifty miles an hour up the hill also. And this time of year with the snow and ice on the road, um, it's, I'd hate to see an accident there. Okay, one last item. Merry Christmas to everyone and a Happy New Year. Uh, I hope it'll be a very prosperous New Year, and everyone has a great, great, uh, Christmas. Uh, and, uh, I've got six minutes to finish this agenda, otherwise I'm going to turn the gavel over to the vice mayor because I have to take my grandson to the airport, uh, about eight fifteen. So, moving on to the next agenda, uh, agenda item is council reports on boards and commissions. Uh, Soldatna Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Mr. Zarneski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, uh, it was a full agenda, and, uh, quickly, uh, the two, two big items that were passed by, uh, the, uh, commission were the, the fieldhouse, uh, required a conditional use permit for its construction, that was passed. It also required a height variance because it is taller than the, uh, standard that's listed in the code. So those two items were passed. There were a couple of other resolutions that were looking at, uh, making minor uh, changes to our code housekeeping type items. Two of those three were recommended for approval, and you'll be seeing them on your agenda, uh, in January. And, uh, the third item, um, was postponed so that some additional material could be developed, and then that'll be back before the commission, uh, uh, in January as well. That's the end of the staff report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zarneski? Saying none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, and that's, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items that I reported on, um, in the written report regarding the fieldhouse, uh, thank you. There was an update provided by, um, Kyle and his team. And one thing that I just wanted to remind you of, that we will be having a work session at the second meeting prior to the second meeting in January, um, and it will all be all about the fieldhouse. Meaning, um, the funding, um, the work plan, the construction, um, the items going in the fieldhouse. It'll be a very comprehensive work session where we will provide the information that you have been asking about, and also the community has been asking about. Also included is the quarterly procurement, uh, report, um, information about procurement since the ordinance has been adopted. And, uh, if I remember correctly, Mr. Mayor, you asked that this be in the packet. And so it's for procurement items that have exceeded fifty thousand and are fully budgeted. It's, um, since the time of the adoption of the ordinance where those items no longer come before you. And it will be on a quarterly basis provided to you, and if you've got any questions about them, feel free to contact me. And I also want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and be safe.
Any questions for the city manager? I do have one quick one. Um, we had talked about the, another session on the Riverfront Development Project, or it was going to be on the agenda. Have we got a date set for that, uh, in January?
I believe we're, um, shooting for February this time. Is, is that correct?
I, I think that's correct. Um, it, it's one of those things where we, we'll be receiving the plan itself in its complete form here in the next couple of days. Um, and what we're going to have to do is, is see if, you know, there's if things internally here with the staff that we want to see modified before we bring it to you. Um, and, and so I'm just not sure on the timing of it, but I, uh, February, I would say at the latest. Um, and it might be possible to do, uh, you know, there are two, a couple hearings similar to like you done, you did with the Fed tax, uh, if we want to extend the comment period.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to make any public comments? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Next item on the agenda is council comments, and we shall start with Mr. Cassidy.
Been a while. Um. This, this week is finals week for students at Sohigh, so I've not had time to prepare a report. Uh, I, uh, I did want to mention though that, uh, it was, it was good to see our senator here in this meeting, even though he was attending virtually. Um, our government class is unusually involved this year. And I think this year and next year, the, the last two years where, where this kind of involvement will happen, um, because we're going to be changing some staff in the next few years, but, um, his, uh, his support to the students who, who wanted to go down there to this next legislative session and talk to the, to the higher-ups, if you will. Um, it was, it was good. It was good to hear that. Um, that's everything. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I'm going to make this short. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, enjoy the snow.
Mr. Nelson?
Just, uh, we, we blasted through it because of time, but, uh, the recognition that the city received, both things like the audit, which are boring, and, uh, things from AML, which, uh, really show the, the work of the staff. So, thank you to them and happy holidays.
Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things here. Uh, Chamber of Commerce met, uh, last week on the seventh. Uh, and during that meeting, uh, Mr. John Zarneski came and gave a presentation on our Riverfront redevelopment plan that was very well received by the Chamber Board. There was a lot of good discussion that followed that presentation. Uh, and I would just like to relay that the, the board was very appreciative of his, uh, time that he gave to them to answer all the questions. I, I think that went very well, so thank you, John. That was very much appreciated. Uh, congratulations to Kyle again for his award on Governance and Civic Affairs Day, so very well earned. It's just always great seeing those brought home to our city and city staff, so excellent team here. Um, and on that note, uh, is Melanie still here with us? Uh, congratulations to her and her team and all the city staff that were involved in our, uh, I keep wanting to say Caffer. I date myself here. Um, I can go on a diatribe on why that's now ACH for however you pronounce that. Uh, but excellent report, uh, always good to see the, uh, successful audit that comes over with that. And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Carey, you set this up with your Bahamba comment. My family just got done reading the book, so I have to say Merry Christmas, everyone, in the words of Tiny Tim. God bless us, everyone. Hope everyone has a good season, so.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, quickly, um, so as you're coming into town, since I live on that part of Soldatna, uh, the speed limit sign coming into Soldatna that, that when it turns to thirty-five is covered in snow. So people would say, well, I didn't see it. Um, and I want to commend Scotty and his crew for the work that they're doing on clearing the sidewalks in town. It is quite visible, um, the work they're doing to make it easy for people to walk around town. Um, congratulations again to Kyle and to the city for the recognition they received from AML last week. And Merry, Merry Christmas to everybody, and I will see you in twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Carey?
I agree with what everyone's been saying. An excellent meeting, and I look forward that at our next meeting, the days will start getting longer in terms of the amount of light.
And hopefully with all the snow. Ms. Whackler?
Thank you. This last week I had, um, the, I don't, fun, fun time, um, at AML doing the newly-elected officials training. Um, I know I've been doing this for a year, but now I, I'm learning how. Um, I had a really good time listening to other municipal governments, um, and kind of finding that they have similar issues and really creative solutions that they're doing to help things with like affordable housing. Um, and just different initiatives and ways to look at it. I, I find it fascinating to learn all that stuff. Um, but just to get out of here and end this, um, happy holidays and good luck to all the parents in this winter break coming up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just had one more thing. I apologize. Uh, one comment I forgot to note on my notes here. Um, in regards to the presentation of the final Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, uh, I would just like to ask staff, if at all possible, can we have some lead time on that to review the plan? And it just doesn't drop in our packet right before the meeting. We have to pass it because I'd like time for us to have discussion and potentially consider amendments to be, uh, uh, reviewed during the meeting when we pass that if, if needed, so. Thank you.
Moving on to the next, uh, agenda items, uh, executive session, there is no reason for one this evening. Uh, number five, our fifteen, meeting announcements. Uh, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three Airport Commission Meeting at five thirty PM. January third, twenty twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, five thirty PM. January fourth, twenty twenty-four, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting, five thirty PM. And January tenth, twenty twenty-four, City Council Meeting at six PM. Saying, having no further items on the agenda, we are adjourned.
And you can get your kid.